Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Father's Day. To all the audience who are joining us now on Zoom and YouTube. I'm Dr. Wei Song Lin. I'm a practicing internist in Chi City since 2011. I attend the Chinese Alliance Church here. I've helped coach youth soccer. So I've been an active member of this, the community in many ways. I voted in all the election in, in the past, but there's one thing about election that is that in local elections, it always became difficult to decide who to vote for. I often felt unable to, to decide who represent what value because when you read in their description, they all sounded about the same. And, and in many ways, they don't have a lot of money behind the election. So, so we don't get a lot of campaigns, so we don't get to ask some questions. And at the end, it just come down to name recognition when we vote. And I think I represent a significant portion of the community, perhaps the Chinese Americans, in this feeling about the local election issues and candidates. So through this series of conversation with the community, I want to help bridge this gap. So I'm going to start this effort by chatting with Mr. Sammy Bird, who is running for a position in Richland School Board. Now, so today's interview will be on Zoom. And so I'm still expecting some people maybe joining us. And I'm going to disable the meeting room so people can just join in directly. And also disable the, the sound when someone comes, so, so we're not interrupted. But whether you're come here on Zoom or you're watching the live stream on YouTube, you can participate with your questions by writing it on the instant message on Zoom or on the YouTube. So, and for the interest of time, I'm going to, for the first thirty minutes or so, it's going to be me chatting with Mr. Bird. And then after that, it will be answering the questions that are posted. But I, I think if I translate everything into Chinese, that may take too long. So for this part, we're only going to be doing it in English. But some of the things that are interest of interest to the Chinese community, I will go back to the video and translate them with the Chinese subtitle to release. So I was here to, again, a中文的朋友讲一讲，就是说我们今天这个访谈节目呢，如果就是说访谈了之后，有很多中文的问题提出来，我会就是整理这个视频，再加上中文的翻译。So, okay, so without further ado, let's hear from our honor guest, Mr. Sammy Bird. Thank you so much for taking out your precious time on Father's Day to join us.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
So now, could you just briefly introduce to our audience about yourself? Especially, you know, your relationship to the Richland's community and the school district?
Thank you. Well, I'm a behavioral scientist. I've been in Richland for twenty-six years. I have a company. I'm a consultant, a business consultant. And so my specialty is to provide leadership training, for example, for all of the Hanford site. They're my clients. I have many hospitals and some educational service districts that I provide consultation to. And so I not only provide consultation and business and leadership. I have a daughter that's in the Richland School District. And so I've had a lot of engagements with them. And this past year, I've learned quite a bit about how we're doing. And so part of that is why I'm running for Richland School Board.
Yeah, now, so to, to us, before I moved here, we looked at different places in the school and all decided that Richland School District is thought to be a good school district. One of those places where people, parents who want kids to go to good school to, to go to. So, but are you seeing something that's really strongly motivates you to come out and run for the school board's decision, uh, position?
No, absolutely. So I thought the same thing. And I, the Richmond community is a beautiful community. It's a fantastic community. We have a lot of professionals. We are very diverse. But in terms of the school district, over the last year, as I started researching, I found a lot of things. For example, you know, as a consultant, one of the first things I look for in a company is to see what their strategic plan is. Because the strategic plan is the roadmap for how we conduct our business, how we provide services to our children, how we provide all the different programs that we provide to our children. And our school district does not have a strategic plan. That's just one thing. As I looked a little bit further, I started to look at how our children were performing academically. And again, we have a good school district, but only sixty-one percent of our children are passing in English and language arts. Only fifty-one percent of our children are passing in terms of math. And only forty-four percent of our children are meeting the grade standard for science. And so when I say passing, I mean, meeting the grade standard. And so that is pretty much a D and two Fs in terms of meeting the grade standard. There's just a lot. And then when we look at some of the curriculum that has been introduced in the past, comprehensive sex education, now we're talking about critical race theory. It's very concerning and very disturbing.
So, yeah, we're going to get to the critical race theory in a little bit. But first, you know, when you listed these areas where even traditionally thought of as good school district at such a failure rate, where do you think the current board failed to meet the challenge?
I think it has to do with accountability. I, I know testing is, is a big topic. Some people feel that we should have more specialized testing and so that teachers have a better idea of how the children are doing. And I agree with that. We have to make sure that however we're doing our testing, that teachers are gauging where our students at, at this time in their educational lives. And all children learn a little bit different. And so back to your point, when you look at that, we have mostly magisters degrees, graduate degree teachers. And so these are highly educated teachers in our school district. And so it begs the question, well, if we have such educated teachers, why are our students not doing well? And I have to trace that back to accountability. For example, what are our accountability standards for teachers in performing to ensure that our children are doing what they need to do at the time that they're getting tested or assessed? And again, I'm not blaming teachers because they are precious asset, just like our children. But we have to look at why we are where we're at. And when we don't have a strategic plan, I would guess that we have no assessments in terms of performance, in terms of holding people accountable for the performance of our students.
So you would look at that, where they didn't do well, the root cause would be the people who make the decision and that's in the school board?
Absolutely. You know, the revised Code of Washington, twenty-eight eight, it holds the school board accountable for holding the superintendent accountable, for holding her leaders and principals and vice principals and teachers accountable for provide the adequate services to our children. And so for me and my business, for me and all of my practice and what I do, I'm accountable for the success of my clients. And I look to myself. If my client is struggling, I have to look to myself. Am I doing the best I can do? Am I providing the proper service or intervention to ensure that my client is getting the results that they need and deserve? I take accountability for my service. We need to ensure that our school district and all of our professionals in our school district are being held accountable for the services that they're providing to our children, education.
Now, so then we'll, people will come back and ask now, I mean, Sammy, you, you've done great in your business world, but does it give you the qualification to be a better candidate for the school board than, than say, the person who's running, you're running against, who happen to be a teacher?
Absolutely. So I can look at this objectively. I know people will say it's hard to look at it objectively, but I will. The person I'm running against, she's a mathematician. She is a former teacher in the school. So she has ten years teaching math in the school district. And I think that's wonderful. But when you look at the school board, we are not applying for a teaching position. We're applying for a leadership position. And for the position, there's requirements. So a school board director has the obligation to report and communicate openly and honestly with parents. That's just number one. School board is responsible for laying out the strategic plan for the school district. Now, I have experience writing on strategic plans. I consult on strategic planning. And last Monday, I delivered to a board for a hospital district, a strategic plan that they're working on. And I'm helping them develop it throughout the organization. When we look at the other practices or the other responsibilities of the school board, it's budget oversight. So in the military, when I was an advisor to the ambassador, came with the State Department in Bangladesh, I was responsible to manage foreign internal defense. That had a budget of over three hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, three hundred million dollars. And so when you look at the large size of a school district, we're talking of at least a couple of hundred million dollars. And looking at budget and budget oversight, it's not only understanding where the money is going, how the money's being used, how it's being appropriated. Because taxpayers, us citizens, parents, we pay taxes to pay for those services. It also includes capital projects. I'm a former special forces engineer. So I'm very familiar with construction and building. I've owned construction companies. I built capital projects, commercial buildings, private residential. So when it comes to contracts, acquisition of materials, ensuring accountability and performance on contracts, having Gantt charts, project management, that is something that I have experience of doing. So we also look forward in terms of, well, what other responsibilities does the school board have? Well, it's personnel, personnel actions. And so, for example, my first graduate degree is in human resources development. I'm a professional in human resource. I'm a certified PHR, which means I'm a subject matter expert on personnel, hiring, firing, conducting assessments, performance of not only schoolteachers, principals, and the superintendent. Further, assessment of how we are performing as an organization. This is what I do as part of my work. And so not only having the qualifications, but understanding what the roles and responsibilities are, essentially, that's what I do now every day of my life. And essentially, school service districts pay me to come in and help them. And so essentially, if you elect me to the school board, I would be free.
Wow. So it would be a big win for our school board if we don't have to pay high price for a consultant. Instead, we have someone who's so have such expertise in these area.
Thank you. And, and that's it. If, if I was applying for a teaching position, I would hire my opponent. If you were going to give me a math test, I would vote for my opponent. But we're not doing that. We're looking at a school board leadership position with leader and management responsibilities. My years of experience with the Department of Energy, I was a director of organizational development. I was the director of training and leadership development. I worked my way up from a lower level to a GS fourteen out of fifteen in the federal government, serving locally with the US Department of Energy. So I've held leadership positions for most of my adult life. This is something that's not new to me. This is something I'm very comfortable with taking leadership of.
Thank you very much for, you know, educating us about the difference between having someone who had experience in teaching versus someone who had experience in leadership, at budgeting, management.
Thank you.
Yeah. So now, earlier in the conversation, you alluded to one of the issue about the teaching of critical race theory. And we, you know, cannot but notice that this is an issue that I caused many parents in different communities across the nation to be up in arms at school board meetings. And many Chinese Americans also spoke up, and I, I think there was one lady whose video had gone viral and he was, she was interviewed at Fox with Hannity. So, and I, I had a very similar feeling as she did as well, that we looked at the theory, we would find some similarity or strong similarity with what we had experienced in China. So when I called the Office of Superintendent of Public Education in, Public Instruction in Washington to voice my concern, she said, well, you don't really know your, what you're talking about because you, you have not experienced the race relationships the way that there are people who have lived through that to experience or, or the lived experience using common Harris words when it comes to that aspect. So, so now today we have you who had the lived experience about the racial relationship in US as you grew up. And obviously, you're very successful now. So tell us, so in your growing up, how had you dealt with that relationship? And, and how does it give you more insights regarding the critical race theory or race relationship in general and critical race theory in particular?
Thank you very much for asking. So my background for everybody watching, you know, I'm sixty years old. So I was born before civil rights to a single black woman in the ghetto of East Oakland, California. This is one of the most dangerous ghettos in the nation. I grew up initially, when I was younger, in the projects of Oakland. And so we had nothing. So in terms of race relations, this is how my mother educated me. She said, son, here's the Bible and here's the dictionary. A verse every night, and I want a word every night. You're going to get educated because that is the pathway with escaping poverty. It's education. She said, things are rough right now, but blaming others for where we're at gets you nowhere. And so my mother taught me at a very young age, accountability and responsibility. I was taught that if you want something in life, you work hard for it. If you want something that someone else has, you work harder for it. That was the balance that I was given, not blame and certainly not victim behaviors. And so if you look at critical race theory, critical race theory, if you look at the theories, you do not have to be a black person to understand critical race theory. From the book Critical Race Theory, who wrote the book and wrote the theory in collaboration with others, it clearly states the tenants and a couple of the tenants of Critical Race Theory, and I have them all committed to memory because I have studied this for many years as I've spoken openly about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and topics like critical race theory. Number one is that our society, that the United States is systemically racist. Now, a system is made up of people. A system without people is nothing. And so essentially, we're saying that the people who run those systems are racist. That would say that the people in your hospital, the people in our schools, the people in our police departments, they're all racist. That is the blame mentality. The other thing that's very disturbing is it questions the concept that America is a melting pot. Well, it's a scientific fact that we are one of the most diverse nations in the world. Fact that people immigrate or migrate to America consistently all year, every year because America is a great country that offers opportunity and freedom from persecution. And I want to say a lot of people who don't understand what it's like to live in a third world nation, who don't know what it's like to live in poverty or to live in oppression, you don't have an appreciation and you cannot understand the dangers of critical race theory. And what I want to say is this, when you tell a young black child, brown child, or any child that they cannot succeed because the system is against them, that does not help a child. That holds a child down. It builds a learned helplessness, as Dr. Steligman said in his theory. It doesn't empower, empower a child. It restricts a child. And so that is the danger of critical race theory. It teaches division. It teaches that if you're a white child, you should feel guilty about the color of your skin. That sounds incredibly racist to me. I don't think any child, regardless of race, creed, color, or religion, should feel guilty about their heritage or their beliefs. Critical race theory teaches the opposite. This is why I'm strongly against it. And as someone who has worked from nothing to having success in business, that is from hard work. That is from this great nation we call America that offered the opportunity. I've traveled the world. I've seen survival, people who barely, who barely survive, people who struggle every day in poverty. We have a wonderful country. We have every opportunity, regardless of where you're at. Now, does racism exist? Absolutely. And it's a shame. But what are we doing to attack racism in our school system? That should be the question. Not to say that our system is racist, but if there's any incidence of racism, what are we doing about it?
Right. Thank you so much for just espounding it so beautifully. That, and I think many of the people who joined into the Zoom call and the YouTube live streaming also had experience in other nation that's way less freedom and know that, you know, coming here, we, we've experienced a lot of goodwill from people who were in the United States not being looked down at or being looked at differently in the sense that we are inferior, but rather that, yes, we have cultural difference, but they don't look at us as being inferior. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been a doctor practicing in the Tri-City area either. So. But now, so, but the, the thing that she, the superintendent, the office of superintendent told me that, oh, and we're not teaching the students, critical race theory, we are only doing a training among the staff and teacher. What do, what do you say about that?
So that's really, and as you and maybe some other folks know, I, I've worked in intelligence. Yes, I was a special forces Green Beret, but I was also special forces intelligence. I've worked intelligence all over the world. We have a phrase in intelligence is called operational preparation of the environment. And here's what that means. How are we preparing the environment for something to happen? We have to ask ourselves as educated people, right, as, as folks with common sense, if we are not going to bring critical race theory into our school system, why are we training our teachers and our administrators within our school systems on critical race theory? Why are we spending the money and the resources to train them if we're not going to bring that into our school system? Now, let me just say, critical race theory already exists in higher education. I know because I've worked in higher education. I have taught in higher education. And so it is now standardized, institutionalized. The same thing happened there. They brought it in for professors and they brought it in for administrators to orient and to acclimate them to this theory or this initiative. And now it's part of curriculum. So I'm not that trusting. And when you look at some of the other concepts that are being brought in, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and you put the stamp black and brown, that's an exclusion of other races, would it not be? And there's a overlap here. And there's also, I want to say, an underpinning that is supporting all these initiatives. And I believe it is simply to pave the way for critical race theory, to provide social justice, and I will say, with respect, indoctrination of our children. I believe that children are raised by their parents, the values, the beliefs of the parents, the family, not the school district. The school district's job is to educate our children. English, writing, arithmetic, math, history, geography, science, that is their job. Bringing the values and beliefs, that is from parents. We do not outsource that to the school district and we do not sign a waiver to the school district saying that you can raise our child during the hours of seven AM and three PM in the afternoon.
So besides the critical race theory, is there any other aspect of theory or education in the school that you think and you're, that you're concerned that may go against the values that, that most people would hold?
Yes. And, and another one, I kind of touched on it, and I want to be clear. So when I say diversity, equity, and inclusion, I am a strong supporter of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am also a strong supporter of equity, but let me clarify what I mean by equity. Equity is not to lower a standard for a certain few. Equity is to hold the standard high where it is, but to ensure that all children have the opportunity and the resources to reach that standard. And so if we have a child that, let's just say, English is the second language, I absolutely believe that we need to leverage resources to understand that that child will have a learning curve, right? The translation, that is a great example. And that is not lowering the standard. That's providing the necessary services and curriculum for that child with that special need to reach what they need to reach. Children in poverty, they were not lowering the standard, but we're going to make sure they have what they need to go to school and a great environment so that they can learn like any other child that doesn't have to deal with poverty. The other concern I have, and, and again, just real quick on, on equity, by not lowering the standards, what we're saying is, as Americans, you work hard, you perform to a standard. But we are giving you every opportunity that everybody else has to ensure that you can reach that standard. The other concern I have is with this comprehensive sex education. We're already seeing it in our schools right now. And so I've been going out on the weekends and going door to door, introducing myself to parents and families. And I'm hearing it from them, everything we've talked about, they have a concern with. Also with the sex education, it's not just the curriculum that they brought in. So for example, they'll say, well, we brought this in and you can opt out. Well, guess what? You brought in curriculum that is not supported by a lot of parents. And the curriculum is not advancing children. The curriculum is, I would say, very provocative. And some of that curriculum shouldn't even be seen by some adults. But when you say you can opt out, that is too much, that's too easy. You are spending money and resources for this curriculum that a lot of parents don't want, and that is harmful to our children. So let's take a look at the curriculum and make sure parents have a voice. Make sure parents are fully aware of what's coming in to our curriculum. Now, aside from curriculum, but directly related, how about the books? How about the reading materials that are being prescribed to our children to say, read this, look this up online? And that's not in the curriculum, but it supports the curriculum and it's being handed out by teachers. And so how many parents are familiar with that? Just last weekend, parent said to me, my child brought this book home and it talks about this. And I won't mention it on our live stream, but it talks about these certain things that I don't want my children to hear from someone else. I want them to hear that from me. So those are just a few. Again, we need to empower, we need to build resiliency within our children. We need to educate our children. But let's leave the values, the morality to parents. Leave that to us. Sex education, having that talk with children, that is something parents do. Now, sex education, that's appropriate for all ages, that educates, and it's something that is approved by parents, I fully support.
See, great. Thank you for providing so many answers to, to our questions already. Now, let me just remind our audience that we'll soon come to the part where Mr. Sammy Bird will answer questions from the audience. So you can either raise your hand, yeah, you know, on the Zoom call, those who are on Zoom call, you can click the raise hand icon so that I know that you have a question. Or you can type your questions, either in English or Chinese, onto the message so that we can help you raise your questions. So one last thing that are certainly affecting every family during the last year, and that is the pandemic and the reopening of schools. Yeah, now I know there, among parents, among educators, school board, there could be variants, variations of approaches or opinions on what is safe and how to get the kids back to school. So, so how do you make a plan to, to work for most people or work for everybody?
No, you said it perfectly. How do you come up with a plan to basically get back to normal, right? And when we look past, you know, I told the Tri-City Herald, they, they asked me, so what did the school board do wrong? And, you know, I can give my opinion, but I have a habit. I do not take cheap shots from the cheap seats, right? I'm not walking in those shoes. I have to empathize. And I have to say, they had some very difficult decisions to make. The science kept shifting from day to day depending who you talk to. And a lot of us parents, we went through the same thing. Well, are you saying children are not at risk or now you're saying children are at risk? Are you saying people with pre-existing conditions or children with pre-existing conditions? And so the science has been all over the place. And is the health department's job to give guidance? Or is the health department's job to make the decision? Or is the health department's job to make the decision? The decision has to be made by A, either the state, and they could, they could mandate certain protocols. That the school boards have to and the school districts have to acquiesce to. And I respect that. But you have to have a plan towards how are we going to move back to the normal that we have enjoyed? The other thing that was concerning is the fact that, well, there are subsequent or ancillary repercussions. How about our students and our children's mental health? I engaged another family last weekend and this weekend. Who are struggling, their child is struggling and the whole family is going through counseling right now. And so, you know, what was said early on, the cure cannot be worse than the cause. And so at what point in time do you make the decision? Here's my view on this. Again, we know so much more today than we did at the beginning of the pandemic. Based on the knowledge that we have today, that is how the decisions need to be made. And so I believe that for me as a parent, I want my child to go back to school. I want my child to have that interaction with with other students. But as a school board, I think the decisions we make need to take into consideration parents' rights. And so instead of making a mandate that we should do this, I think we should have a baseline guidance. And I think we should leave it up to parents. Do parents want to have their children homeschool, meaning online education? Or do parents want to have their children go back to school? One of the decisions that was made that I liked so far is that we have online education as an option. And that is to support parents that say, no, I want to make sure my child's safe. I think it's best for my child to stay home. And so we will have them utilize that option. But for the parents that want their children to return to school normally and have that interaction and that fellowship with one another. That supports their cognitive development, it supports their mental health, that should be an option as well. And now it's coming down to masks and mask mandates. Again, I support the science, but the science is all over the place, depending on the health department or depending on the state. And so what I would say is, let's give that option to the parents to say, if teachers are vaccinated, are they at risk? And so that way a parent can say, well, the teachers are vaccinated and I want my child to go back to school without a mask. I believe we should give that parent the right to say, you can send your child back to school without a mask. Because the CDC has released new guidelines that say we are okay to do so. And so essentially, I believe we have to have a plan, we have to have a baseline. But mostly, we need to make sure that parents have options based on what they think is best for their child.
Thank you so much for answering those tough questions. And some of these questions are very tough to to make the decision on. So thank you for, you know, just getting those straight answers exactly what you're thinking. Now, so anyone in the audience would like to to ask questions? What are other important issues that you as school board member would like to address in the next few years?
No, thank you, that that's a great question. So aside from curriculum, which is really big, aside from ensuring that we have a strategic plan, that's really big. The other issue I spoke of a little bit is about assessment. And it's not only assessment of our teachers, of our administrators, of our leaders, which are very important. Because they set the tone for how we perform. But to that point, a huge, I guess, initiative for me would be to assess our programs. If we're at sixty-one percent on English language and language arts and we're at fifty or fifty-one percent on math. And forty-four percent of students performing to their grade, that is something I want to dig into. As you said, Doctor, getting to the root cause. Why are our results so bad when we have such highly educated teachers? And I believe highly capable. We need to look in, and we call this human performance technology in my business. You trace that down to the root cause of what's going on, is it internal, is it external? Do we need to partner more with parents? What can we do to ensure that our children are meeting the grade level academic standard? That is important to me. But in order to do that, we have to conduct an in-depth assessment as to how our education programs are performing. That's just one, and that's a biggie. The other one is parents, ensuring that parents have a voice. Now, we could say that, but I'm, I guess I say fact and non-verba, deeds not words, right? I'm a talker, but I'm more a doer. So as a board director, I would work with my fellow board members to establish a committee on the board. A committee of parents. And parents would rotate in every three to six months, we could set that up based on what the parents want. So every three months, this board committee that represents the parents in our community, they have direct access to the board. And we're just not limited to a few parents. That's why we rotate our parents through these committees every three to six months. So that all parents have an opportunity to participate. And the purpose of that committee is this, that parents have a direct voice to the board of directors. Who are ultimately responsible for A, reporting back to the community, parents. B, ensuring that the curriculum is appropriate for our children. C, to ensure that we are delivering on the promises that we made during the times that we campaigned. Are we doing what we're saying? We need to be held accountable. This committee will ensure that we're held accountable. It gives parents a direct voice to the board of directors. So we have accountability, we have assessment as to how we're doing. And real quick on that, key performance indicators. If we're going to say we're going to do something, how do we know we're doing it well? We cannot wait until testing. We need to have more onsite testing to ensure that we're performing to the standards that we set. Because if we're not, we need to make an adjustment so that we're continually on a path of improvement. So those are just a few, and if you have any more questions regarding those things, let me know. I could talk all day about a lot of things I want to do. I want to do leadership development for all school district leadership teams, supervisors. Everyone gets leadership development. I'm a strong believer in building resiliency and self-confidence and self-regard into our children. We can bring in coursework, we can bring in all types of tools that can do that. I do that with my professional development. We do personality types, we do emotional intelligence. There's so many different tools that we can bring in to build resiliency in our children. Those are just a few, but there's many more if you want to know.
Yeah, earlier you have touched on the fact that there have been, you know, you using the exact word indoctrination in our school. So how do we bring it back to where the the idea that you had, the school teach them the knowledge? And leave to the parents to teach them the value?
Yes, beautifully said. So this will surprise you. Our school district does not have a code of ethics for teachers and administrators, there's no code of ethics. OSPI has a code of ethics for credentialed, again, teachers and administrators. For credentialed school employees, OSPI, but not our school district. They have policies. And so one way to ensure that a teacher is not bringing in curriculum. Or materials that have not been approved by the school board and parents. We ensure that we have a code of ethics by which they go by that says they cannot do it. And if they are doing it, then that would be an incident that is reported by the parent. And it will be heard because they have a parent committee that can report directly to the school board. Just in case that concern does not make it through the superintendent to the school board. And so if there's an incident, now that we have a code of ethics, we can hold that teacher or that administrator accountable. If they violated the code of ethics. And of course, you have to do your due diligence, we have to make a fair investigation of the incident and see did this occur? What did they do? But again, we have a code of ethics and we should have a policy and procedure that tells us not only you're not allowed to do this. But what we are going to do if we do have someone who violates the code of ethics or violates the policy, accountability.
But the union tend to protect the teachers, let's say, we all know that the union is not just. About the teacher's benefit, but also they have their own political leanings, what they wanted to push. So if in the name of protecting the teacher's rights, but they are actually protecting the teacher in terms of. Doing those bidding of the indoctrination, how do you counter that?
And that is not hard, it's not as hard as you would think. Again, we have the bargaining agreement. And and as someone who's a subject matter expert in human resources and human resources management, legal relations, it's in my wheelhouse, that's what I do. So a nationally certified mediator, so I mediated grievances, right? And so I have an understanding of unions, union grievances, the 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 methodologies and the mechanisms around unions. So to your point, our bargaining agreement has stipulation that says that teachers must perform to school policies, school procedures. And a code of ethics. And so if it's already been instituted, it's in our policies and our procedures and it's part of our code of ethics. That means that bargaining agreement is built around that. It doesn't exempt a teacher from obeying the rules. So the bargaining agreement is initiated to protect teachers to benefits, make sure they have a fair wage and salary. Make sure they have the necessary resources they need to be successful and they should have that. We should not have a union to have to do that. We should all support our teachers and our administrators. We should all have that responsibility of making sure that they have everything that they need. Now that being said, this is how we ensure that that indoctrination doesn't happen. Because again, just because you're in the union does not exempt you from obeying the rules. We just have to make sure that those rules are established. We have a code of ethics, we have a policy on it, and we have a procedure on how to execute on that policy.
So I'm going to remind our participating audience at Zoom and on YouTube, do you have any questions? If you're on Zoom, you may just raise your hand so I can unmute your mic, so you can ask the question. So we'll be going once. So otherwise, we might just, you know. Thank Mr. Bird for the excellent presentations and the question that he has answered so far. And and if people have come up with other questions during the campaign before they finally pitched their votes, how do they contact you?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Lynn. I would say, please go to our website, it's semibird.us, S E M I B I R D dot U S. And you can learn everything about me. And, you know, Dr. Lynn, you had mentioned, you know, what compares and contrasts me from my opponent. And again, with with fairness and respect to my opponent, we just have different backgrounds, which is good. But you can look on my website and you'll see my jobs, you'll see the positions I held. You'll know what I do, you'll know my education. If you look at the other website, you won't know what jobs did you hold, what titles did you hold? You say you have leadership, where, what did you do? And so I think that voters need to understand, our community needs to understand all of our information so that you can make an educated decision.
So, yeah, I I put the. S E M I B I R D dot U S, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I put the web address to for everyone to see on Zoom. So you can look it up and see. And one thing that I would want, would it be possible for you to share some of your picture that you, when you visited Asian countries?
Yes, no, absolutely, I have some on my website. And and so I was, my second language is Mandarin Chinese, I don't speak it well. But I have a passion, I love it, I love the culture, I have dear friends who still live in Taiwan right now. And I've been there many times, so I would be happy and honored to share my pictures. I've lived, also lived in Japan, I've lived in the Philippines, I've lived all over, I worked, I worked on Pacific Asia. Was my area of assignment and so I loved it and so I'm.
Yeah, if you go up to the. Website that Mr. Bird has, you will see some of the pictures that he he have with the teams in in different countries. So so he's, I I'm going to say that if we have Mr. Bird on the school board, we really get a bargain. Things that we would otherwise have to pay high, big bucks for for consulting now. Just by our vote, we can make that happen.
Won't let you down.
All right, so if no other questions, I'm going to just, you know, give my heartfelt thanks to Mr. Bird. And close out the interview today. Hopefully we'll be able to do another one in the future when we hear more questions and and something like that they come up. And I would also like to do similar style interview with the other two school board member, school board. Candidates in the next few weeks so that our community would get to know them better. All right, so thank you so much, Sammy. And thank you, Bill, for helping me as the co-host and thank you to everybody participating. So and enjoy your Father's Day.
Thank you, Janet, thank you, Noah, thank you, everybody, Jonah and Dr. Hampton, thank you so much, everybody, for making me feel so welcome. I really appreciate you. I see, Xiaoping Yang. So I I love it, I I love it, I love it, I could stay all day with you guys.
So, yeah, we we will do that again.
Thank you and happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Xie xie ni, saijian.